Commissioners, are we ready? Attorneys, are we ready?
Okay.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Somebody needs to turn it off. It's...
Nothing.
Who's on the... Are you on the go meeting? I'm not on the go. Who's muted?
No.
It's not me. Okay. Go ahead. Are we ready?
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of my fellow commissioners, Manager Madrid, Clerk Torres, I would like to welcome everyone this morning to our Wednesday, October 14, 2020 meeting. It is now 9:00 a.m. I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Here.
Honorable Paul Bocka?
Here.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Here.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Here.
Honorable Frances Luna?
Here.
Thank you.
May I more? Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we get started, I would like to welcome our new appointed Commissioner, Ms. Frances Luna. I look forward to working with you. And we just welcome your board and hang on tight. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is silent meditation. I'd like to ask everyone to please join me in 15 seconds of silent meditation at this time. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item V3, Fledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Luna, would you please read us in the pledge, Your Honor? My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item B4, the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for October 14, 2020 as noted? Or are there any changes or corrections?
Commissioner Buck will make that motion.
Commissioner Forster will second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as noted. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Bocka?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Frances Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item C, Public Comments. We'd like to ask anyone that wishes to give public comments that is in the audience to approach the podium. Remember the three-minute rule. Any information that needs to be given to the commissioners at this time would be asked to place in the little black box next to the podium there. And it looks like... I don't have anybody other than Nate. Nate, public comment? We've got you, so we're gonna go sit down.
All right. I'm Nate Stevens, 723 Van Patten. I'm here pertaining to the property listed at 7... I think it's 725 Van Patten. Three years now. The weeds have been about seven foot tall. The windows are broke out and there's vagrants living in the property. So I'm just asking that the city take the measures possible to alleviate this.
Thank you, good morning.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone out in go-to meeting that would like to give public comments at this time? Do we see anybody? I don't see anybody in go-to meeting at this time, but we do have some email public comments. At this time, I will turn it over to Manager Madrid to read the public comments.
Mayor, Commissioners, these two are pertaining to an item that's on our agenda today. However, that item does not require a public hearing. So I'll go ahead and read them as public comment for your consideration. The first one is from Jessica Leguera, Christopher Slate and Jessica Leguera, to the City Commission. "As business owners on Broadway and TRC, my wife and I heartily support approval of the waiver that will allow the TRC brewery to sell beer at restaurants and broasters. Not only is their beer of superior quality, but the brewery has proven to be of major importance in the TRC community, both as a successful business attraction and as a social help for locals and tourists. By all means, in these challenging times, let's support John and Marianne and all the good work that they do. Let's take advantage of the opportunity to have their excellent brews more readily accessible." Thank you. Christopher Slate and Jessica Leguera." That's the first one. The next one is from Lynette Mondello. "On behalf of Rocky and Lynne Mondello, to whom it may concern, we own the property at 420 North Broadway, Morning Star Outfitters. We would like to show our support of the brewery. We feel that they add so much to the downtown. We hope that you will issue them the permit that they are requesting." Rocky and Lynne Mondello." Those are the two that I have for public comment there.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone else in the audience which is to give public comment? If not, we'll move on to our next item on our agenda this morning is Item D, which is response to public comment. Do we have any response to public comment this morning? And a response to public comment this morning?
Commissioner Forster, we'll just... How do we... How does it need to go about? Does he need to file a formal complaint on the Van Patten Street? Or what needs to happen to go forward with that?
First of all, we need to see if we have anything pending. There may already be a case pending in municipal court. If not, we'll follow up.
Sound good? Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item E, the Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar lists six items. Item E1, City Commission Regular Minutes of September 23, 2020. E2, Acknowledged Regular Airport Advisory Board Minutes of July 7, 2020. E3, Acknowledged Special Airport Advisory Board Minutes of September 9, 2020. E4, Acknowledged Regular Planning and Zoning Minutes of July 8, 2020. E5, Acknowledged Regular Planning and Zoning Minutes of August 3, 2020. And E6, Accounts Payable for September 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Calendar as noted? Commissioner Forster, make the motion.
Commissioner Luna will second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Calendar as noted. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Amanda Forster?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Bocka?
Aye.
Honorable Frances Luna?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item F, Public Hearings. We have F1, Public Hearing Discussion Action Approval of an Alternate Summary Procedure for 660 Post Street, City Manager Madrid and Tracy Alvarez.
Mayor, Commissioners, before Tracy gives the background on this, I'm gonna ask Jay Rubin to review the process for us.
Yes. Good morning, everybody, and welcome Commissioner Luna.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, every once in a while, I always like to update the commission about the procedure. You can follow it. You can ever talk about some sort of change in land use or there's an application for the body of land use. And I've talked about this before, but it's a process called a batter shell process. And I guess maybe help before I go forward here, I don't know. I guess I actually here. Do we know if there's people trying to speak? Is anybody opposed to the applications? I guess I'd like to know that, so I can...
There's one opposition and then we have one proponent.
One proponent.
What we have said? We have what?
One opposition and one proponent.
Okay, good. The batter shell process is an evidentiary proceeding. And, you know, and the courts have determined that, you know, when you're talking about something as important as, you know, the use of someone's land, that the people who are either in favor of it or against it should be given opportunity to testimony in front of the City Commission as to their views. Now, it's important early in the process, you know, especially before I start the hearing, is to really determine the nature of who the parties are. The good is, again, the people who sign in are given opportunity to speak. But it's important to know where they actually would fall within the definition of a party. And what I recommend you do is when someone is speaking, is to determine their interest in the proceeding. And if someone establishes that they either have property like within 100 feet of where the proposed action located, or if they establish that they have a direct financial beneficiary interest in the proceedings, that would make them an actual party to the proceeding. Now, the reason why it's important is this is because, again, everybody would get a chance to speak. But if you don't fall actually in the definition of a party, you are really a member of the public, which means you are allowed to give testimony at the end of everybody else's testimony, but you're not permitted to cross-examine the actual party to the proceeding. So that's always the important thing to note. So the usual procedures, we have staff who first get their testimony. The commission will ask questions. And then you... I would assume you would ask the proponents testify and then the opponents. But again, as someone is ready to take the hold of the speech, it's always good to find out really what their interest is in the proceedings before they actually will give testimony or they accept the cross-examination. So that's coming to not show what we're talking about, so...
Okay.
Anyway, any question about the procedure?
Attorney Rubin, is this a batter shell procedure or just a regular?
No, I think it is a batter shell. Again, we are dealing with land use. Yes, that's why I was giving that advice, yes.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. First, I want to let you know that both this public hearing as well as the next public hearing was originally scheduled to go before our Planning and Zoning Board on September 8 for recommendation to the City Commission for the September 23. However, due to a last-minute resignation on our Planning and Zoning Board, we no longer had enough of a quorum to hold planning and zoning meetings. And we didn't know at that time when we would have a full quorum or enough of a P&amp;Z board. And at this time, we technically still don't. Even though I know we have a recommendation before you guys today, we still don't have a planning and zoning full quorum board.
Mayor, one of the points I should stress also is to be smart in all this.
Correct.
My idea of everybody, including Tracy, who's trying to speak, maybe you have to have a take at this point.
Okay. So you would like for... You want her to finish giving her input?
No, because it's actually a testimony. So I think really she and the other witnesses should be smart.
They should all be smart at this time?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. At this time, could I ask for Sid Bryant, who is going to speak on behalf of these public hearings as a proponent, to stand up? And also Kim Audet? And then we'll turn it over to Madam Clerk.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you.
Thank you. So due to the publication requirements and the fact that we had already advertised for public hearings, we went ahead and got another publication out. And that's why it's before you guys today for your final action as opposed to in front of a P&amp;Z. So the applicant is Sid Bryant. He is here. Property is located at 660 Post on the corner of Post and Van Patten. Application... The applicant is requesting to split the parcel, creating two separate parcels. All required documents have been submitted. All fees have been paid. We have that all scanned for questions.
At this time, do we have any questions from the commission? And then we go to the opponents, correct, Jay?
Well, I think the proponents... Wait, staff, I guess. I guess you would need to ask if the proponent has any question of Ms. Burnett or Ms. Alvarez, excuse me. And not that we can move on.
Okay. Proponents, do you have any questions for staff? Opponents, do you have any questions for staff?
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, okay, now, again, we're ready to need to be clear. I mean, we're seeing power...
We need to ask her...
We need to ask her what her interest in this is.
And yes. Ms. Audet, could I get you to specify your interest in why you are an opponent to this property?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am... I was invited to come to this public hearing by certified males as I am an owner of the real estate across the street. I believe that's within 100 feet since they don't count the street when they do the assessment of distance. So I'm adjacent.
So you're adjacent to the property, the subject property?
Yes.
Okay. And I would have to say that I would think under the rules that would qualify her as a party opponent. So I think therefore she has the right to ask questions of Ms. Alvarez.
Okay, thank you.
How do we do this questioning process since we have one microphone and two people?
No question.
Should she just ask and then step to the side and then Tracy can come back to the...
Yeah, or Ms. Audet, you're gonna come over here. I need to step aside for a moment and just sit over here and... Okay, that way... Okay. I'll go over here.
Thanks, Ms. Audet. Okay, my first question is, Tracy Burnett went through the... Or posted the ordinances for this evaluation of alternative summary process. And in that number one A... No, number A1 and 2 have a standard that this lot does not qualify for, making it impossible to approve. That's number E. It has to be a legal... I forget how exactly they put it. It has to be a legal division. And the lot sizes are not. They do not qualify for R3 zoning. And this is an R3 zone. The minimum lot size has to be 4,500 feet. So I am asking Ms. Burnett if she considered that particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burnett?
Yes, I did take into consideration.
And what was your conclusion after considering it?
The parcel meets the required size within the municipal code.
Could you go through the mathematics of that for me, please?
The required slot size or parcel size in within the municipal code for R3 is a 45-foot width. And the parcel's supposed to split. Do you need that?
Um, I believe the Section 1114-2, Standards for Districts, states that the R3 single-family minimum area lot size is 4,500 square feet. This does not qualify under that.
The two parcels will split in a 57-foot by 75-foot... Or I'm sorry. Yeah, 57 by 75 and a 63 by 75.
Would anybody like to do the math on 67 by 75.22?
Not a mayor. I believe in the batter shell statements. This is the questioning process, not the statement process. So Ms. Audet needs to be asking questions. Your husband and staff not making statements.
I agree. Yeah, actually, Ms. Audet was more annoying than you're talking to her. I'm trying to ask questions. Do you allow them to testify when they arrive soon enough right now to try to ask questions?
Yes, Ms. Audet, if you will just ask all your questions and then later on, we will do the...
Okay. Um, let me see. Next question is City Manager, Mr. Madrid?
No, no, Ms. Audet. It has to be Mr....
It has to be just that.
Oh, you said staff, but you don't mean staff. You just mean Ms. Burnett.
She's the only person that testified.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, the... Jay, the commission would ask questions then, correct? Could the...
If you want. I thought you already... Okay, maybe I... Okay, sure. If you have questions, you have the right to do that, yes.
I kind of have one from Ms. Audet. What is... Do you have a business that's close? I mean, what is your major reason for being an opponent to this?
I own real estate in a blighted area and I believe this will add to the blight.
It will add to the what?
Blight.
Which is the... It'll make things worse.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Mayor.
I think you said it's the blight. It'll make things that will be bad, right, for the property or not good or...
My property, yes. I have a pecuniary interest. It's Cherokee Apartments and Hot Springs Transit.
And this will interfere with that in some shape or form?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
And this will interfere with that in some shape or form?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that?
I'd be glad to, thank you. Um, let me see now. Where do I start? All right. Blight is the loss of services and neglect of services in a particular geographic area. And West Van Patten is famous for the crime that's been going on there.
So is this gonna be a competitive business? Is that what we're getting at?
I can't do my business when there are so many crimes. My places are being broken into. My houses are being shot up. I have bullet holes in my windows.
Okay.
And this is because of the unit number 29 right next door, which is a 25-foot lot with a house on it that people occupy with enthusiasm and probably illegally. Um, I don't know if this... This property used to be connected to lot 3232, which is now being considered for a summary plat improvement. And I believe it has never been split apart from that by plat improvement. So technically speaking, it's still a part of it. And this summary plat would create then, as I understand it, two illegal lots because the summary plat procedure being asked for is a... Is a split of three lots when in fact, four lots are all connected together. So that fourth lot will be broken apart legally now.
Okay, and so you... The breaking of these lots is going to create more crime in the neighborhood, is that...
Yes. I'm sure of it.
Okay.
Somebody has to take responsibility for that house on the illegal lot 25.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Audet. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask Sid Bryant, the proponent, to come forward and explain your process and what your intention is of the lot.
I purchased three lots that are on Post Street and Van Patten. But three lots do not make three building sites. They used to. Now it's... And I'm dividing it into two building sites. And I have... I've cleaned up one building that is there if any of you have driven by it. I spent a lot of time still taking stuff to the dump and to other places. And I rented out on a... Sort of like an Airbnb or whatever. But then the building next to it, which is... I was going to take that down and construct another building there at some time. But I don't see how... The building she's talking about, I don't see how it ever had it... Was ever owned or... Maybe some owner in the past owned four lots. I don't know. But I only own three lots.[1446.72] And they, uh, and I had them surveyed, and they said that it met the requirements as far as size. And then the city said that before I, um, turned in this application. And I think, um, I think sometimes before, as far as cleaning and blight, you should look at your own places, um, or a person should look at their own places before they cast stones, or there's something like that, some famous book, I think. But, uh, if you have any questions, it may not matter.
Thank you, Mr. Sid. Is there any questions for Mr. Sid?
I have questions. Um, Mr. Bryant?
I have a little.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant, um, are there property, are the, are there buildings or structures on those properties at this time?
Yes.
What is the condition of those prop, those buildings?
I think one is very well, 'cause I fixed it up. I mean, I, I think it looks good, and the neighbors all compliment, uh, compliment it. When they go by and it's clean and, uh, it was, uh, quite a mess.
And the second?
And the second, um, is a shed that I'm just using for storage at the moment.
Okay. And your plan for that property? Uh, is it Airbnb, a permanent rental, long-term rental, month by month? What is your plan for that?
It probably would be more of a, um, sometimes month to month. Uh, like a film crew is gonna be, uh, renting the one building from me for a, for a month, or for, for longer than a month, perhaps.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Bryant, were the yards and the, uh, outside landscaping and everything on these properties, it's, you maintain it, right?
Yes.
The weeds are cut and the yard is cleaned and, and it's maintained periodically? Or it doesn't overgrow and everything, where it just looks?
No, I think it looks, personally, I think it looks good.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, she gets to ask questions on him, right?
Yes.
Ms. Audette, do you have any questions for Mr. Bryant?
Uh, yes, I do.
Could I get you to stand up and approach the podium, please?
Thank you. Um, first off, uh, um, Mr. Bryant, aren't you the head of a political party here in Truth or Consequences?
Uh, Ms. Audette, that has nothing to do with what's going on here. Let's stay on, let, let's stay on topic. No, it does not.
Relevant?
No, ma'am, it does not.
Okay.
It does not.
Let me see, what else do I need to ask?
You need to ask him questions about his property and his intent and, and why you're not wanting this done.
Okay. Now, this is just for summary plat, correct?
This side is?
Alternate summary plat.
Alternate summary plat. Yes, okay.
Uh... There has been another alternate summary plat on this location, correct?
Now, to my knowledge, there, there's been, uh, no summary plat.
Angela, can you take that mic off and, like, let her hold yours or something?
Yeah, they don't, they're, they're attached.
Tracy Burnett?
Yes, Tracy?
I think she can, she only asks the best questions to him.
We're, we're just being, we're just questioning him at this time.
Oh, okay. Um, well, that's in conflict with what Tracy Burnett said, um, in her assessment. Uh, let me see. Um, what is the distance between the, uh, back porch and the, um, eastern edge of the property?
I think about 10 or 12 feet.
Utility easements are required to be not less than 25 feet in width. Does this not, uh, uh, require, uh, an easement along the back of the property to provide service to the new property being formed on, uh, Van Patten Street?
No, there's already power and a, and a, uh, a separate meter going to the front piece. But, but if I need to give an easement, I don't, I mean, if I were, um, I guess, but I never heard that they had a 25-foot easement on, and that, nothing does there.
This appears to be part of the, um, Section 11114-2 Standards for Districts. It's Page 3, 45 of the zoning, I mean, the, uh, City Code. Number 4 and 5. Um, do you plan to do anything about the, uh, drain on utilities that this will, or, what do you call it? The electrical drain that this will cause, um, on the, uh, the electric, ancient electrical system in that particular block?
Ma'am, that, that contains an assumption?
Yes.
That there is an electrical drain out, I don't think that's the answer.
I, I think, Ms. Audette, that you really need to specifically point out your questions as to what his intent of the property is and why you do not want it there. Uh, you should not assume that he's going to, uh, take anything away from what he's doing because of that. You're just assuming. So you need to ask him specifically what your thoughts are of him doing this with the property.
Okay, uh, apparently he's, uh, made a veiled criticism of my property, to his knowledge.
I don't, I don't think that's, uh, I don't think that's anything to, to talk about here. A criticism on your property.
Yeah, not statements, we need to hear your question.
So the commission is not going to consider that when they consider my testimony. This is why I'm asking.
Consider what?
Uh, his veiled insult of my property.
Uh, that's not our, that's not up to us to worry about.
Thank you. Okay, um, so...
I mean, what you guys think of each other is not up to us commissioners to decide.
So, um... This, uh, this new property that adds to the 600 block of Van Patten will increase the housing glut, because he says he's planning to build it. Our current housing glut is 70%.
Madam Mayor, is there a question? Or do we need to proceed?
Yes.
She's in short of her testimony.
Yeah, let's just, let's proceed.
Uh, Mr. Bryant, do you have plans to help reduce the housing glut on Van Pa, West Van Patten Street?
I have to shake my head like that.
Generally, that, there's an assumption.
Yeah, you're a student, so again, we're not, we're not gonna go this route. Let's, let's proceed with the...
Well, this is frustrating. You asked me very specific.
I, I would say, as I, I already mentioned, why don't we consider what Ms. Audette is saying as her testimony? Let's give her testimony at this point, I guess. If Mr. Bryant has any questions, then we can go with that.
Okay.
I, I think that's all.
Yes, I've had this problem before in public hearings, not being allowed to ask my question.
Okay, let, let's go ahead and give your testimony, and then, uh, Mr. Bryant can answer any questions that you may have in your testimony. Jay, is there a time on this?
You wanna, you can...
Well, I think, no, the rule I asked is specify a time. But I think we can get to a point, if you feel it's being redundant or we're really not asking anything new, you have the right to cut it off.
Sid, you should go ahead and have a seat at this time. Kim, I would like for you to give specifically points, uh, in your testimony as to why you're against Mr. Bryant doing what he wants to do. And I will give you probably no more than 10 minutes.
Alrighty.
I hope it's quick.
So, um, we have severe blight because we have a housing glut of around 70%. That is to say that we have, um, five people living there at this time. Four or five units occupied. And, uh, the cause of that was the, uh, crime that was there, since you cannot live in a place where people are constantly breaking into your house. Everybody left. So municipality is, um, given the zoning authority under NMSA 321-1 in terms of promoting health, safety, and morals for the general welfare of the community. So I've mentioned safety, morals, and general welfare now. Um... Let's see. Zoning ordinance require the compliance with 11, Section 11114-1 of our ordinances, which, uh, is the general development standard. And, uh, as I mentioned, this lot is the wrong size. It adds two are blight by being the wrong size. Um, it creates two illegal lots where there was one illegal lot. We have enough trouble with the one illegal lot. Um... There was a court case, Miller versus City of Albuquerque, 89 NM 503, 554, P. Vat 2D, 665, 1976, very old concept. The zoning authority shall enforce the ordinance adopted pursuant to, um, state laws, uh, 321-1 through 321-14. Um, it's not that the municipality can arbitrarily decide whether to enforce or not to enforce the zoning ordinances. It's a requirement. This is why I brought up the minimum lot size. So, um... The... Utility easements are a part of the ordinances. We all have a duty, of course, you know, what, no matter how powerful we are, well-connected, or whether you just don't like me because I'm indigenous. But, uh, we all have the duty to, um, maintain the city ordinances. So, um, it's very important that, especially in an area that's impoverished and, um, poorly populated now, for all of us who are left to do our best to, um, reduce the blight. Now, bright paint is not your property, and it's pretty to look at, and that's lovely. You drive by, you look at the paint, you go, yay! It don't add to the quality or the prosperity of the area. So, uh, the, uh, the distance covered by these, uh, these criminal activities includes bullocks and the county offices, which are nearby. So this is not just a little issue of blight. We have houses that have burned down. We had two transformers that have blown and arced. I was standing near them both times. My life was in danger. And, uh, two of my buildings burned down. So I'm not putting up with this anymore. You guys want to get the powerful rich at the expense of us indigenous? Then you have to improve the area, replace those transformers. It's not asking a lot. You've had them for years. I remember in 2008, uh, city manager was bragging about it.
And we're still talking about the property. We're not talking about transformers.
It's the community. This is a blight problem. I know you don't want me to say these things because it goes on the public record, but it's an issue. I'm sorry. So, um, as long as, and of course, that particular property will now become a focus of the criminals, because the moment you try to improve something, the criminals think, ah, there's something there we can steal, and they will go after it. Um, our police have ignored me. I've had to wait three hours for an officer to show up. When I caught a criminal on my property, in my unit. Three hours. Of course, the criminal just drove off in a stolen car with my stuff. And the police have resisted getting it back. They say, oh, it's Elephant Butte, so it's not our problem. And the sheriff says, oh, it's one of the crime in TRC. It's not our problem.
We're getting a picture of the...
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting off the subject here.
Now, this is blight. This is the issue.
Okay. Are you now?
Um, as far as the summary plat procedure. This summary plat procedure will officially split that illegal lot off of these four. It's not that, you know, you guys claim you don't know. Well, you have to know. This is a, um, legal issue, and it's adding to the crimes in the area. People like to say, oh, there's no more crime there. Why? Nobody's been there for a month. They were there for years.
Well, we're not worried about that right now.
Yes, we are. And, uh, you cannot split that piece of property off by a legal procedure. So you have to know. It's a simple thing to do. As a, as a former county, county employee, and both of you, uh, Frances Luna and Sandra Whitehead, were former county employees, you know how to do this. You just go to the assessor and you look up the records. I don't have the time. I'm trying to stay alive there. I have to stay on my property to keep those criminals off. It used to be a police thing. They would do it 24/7, which is a drain on the city's police force.
Thank you, Kim. Is there any other questions that you have for Mr. Bryant?
Please remember that I have had issues before with being, not being allowed to talk. Now, um, let me see, for Mr. Bryant's question is...
Mr. Bryant is trying to improve the property.
Uh, he managed to get a new transformer put up on his pole. And, uh, there are, um, let's see, two on my block, and there is, uh, one servicing the entire Center Shays, um, RV Park, on his block.
But again, we're, we're diverting from the conversation of the property here. We're talking about transformers, and this has nothing to do with this property.
This is a public minis-
With all due respect, Ms. Audette, if you would like to come and make public comment at any other meeting regarding your transformers, we would welcome it. But right now, we're talking about a specific issue. And personally, I don't think improving a place brings crime to it.
And Mr. Bryant is trying to improve that?
Yeah, it will attract crime. Because you don't believe it, isn't proof of anything. You just go look in the records.
Thank you, Ms. Audette.
I mean, it would be beautiful, wouldn't it? If we could all, um, spend tons of money, but then we're not all rich because the city's been, um, prejudiced in its approach to the, the infrastructure. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay, great. Now, let's see what else I have here.
Ms. Audette, uh, Ms. Luna has questions pertaining to your testimony.
Okay.
Ms. Luna?
What is the, the existing condition of your property?
I'm sorry, what?
What is the existing condition of your property?
Condition?
Yes, ma'am.
It's, uh, there. It's been there since the 30s.
Okay. How many of your units are you renting?
I cannot rent any because the criminals come across the street. They have bullet holes in the windows. They break windows, they get in.
So what are you doing to change the condition of your property?
I pester the police often.
Okay, how are you improving your property?
The last time, they threatened to arrest me for pestering them.
How are you improving your property?
I keep it clean. I redid the roofs.
Okay.
That's several thousand dollars.
So do you live on that property?
Yes, I do.
You do not live in Elephant Buttes?
No. Actually, I spend, uh, weekends, I think you'd say, I'm sort of a in-between. So it's about, uh, weekends in Elephant Butte, weekdays in TRC.
Okay.
My business is, both of my businesses are out of TRC.
So what is the condition of the landscaping of your property?
I have, uh, trees. I just planted a number of buffalo berries.
Is it manicured? Is it overgrown? Is it...
It's not overgrown.
Okay.
If it was, the city would be jumping on the spot to cite me.
Thank you, Mayor.
They go to great efforts.
Commissioner Aragon.
Yes, uh, Mayor, can I ask, uh, Mr. Bryant a question? I know she's up on the stand there, but to clarify what I want to ask her, can I ask Mr. Bryant a question?
Attorney Rubin, how does that procedure work?
I, originally, it really wouldn't be the way I'd do it, but I mean, maybe just crime moves along. I think that's fine. Just to clarify a point, yes?
Okay.
Say yes.
Mr. Bryant, uh...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a thing.
Ms. Ki, I thought you stepped to the side. You need to pull your mask down so she can see your lips.
Okay, I realize, um, you're, you, I, I might have missed it. You, you want to, what are you gonna do with your property, those parcels, uh, in, in the long run? What's your, what's your, uh, vision?
Well, one piece I'm not going to touch is gonna stay there, one that I've already, um, painted, um, along with other things. And that I, I use with the hotel, like, um, I pay tax on it, uh, lodger's tax on it.
So the one you're not gonna touch, what is, what is it, what is it doing now?
Now, I'm, I'm using it for storage.
Storage?
It's a, it's a storage shed that was originally a garage. And it just has, um, stuff that I've stored from different, uh, units and things that were left over.
Okay, and the other two?
I only have, there's some, there's, um, in this location, there are only, um, uh, those, those two lots.
Okay, so one's gonna be storage, and the other, other one?
The storage one will be, will become, uh, at, at some time, will become a new house.
Okay.
It may be a manufactured house, but it may be.
All right. Uh, and, and from what I understand, Mr. Madrid, the Pliny and Zoning Board normally would have recommended something to us, but they don't have core enough people to, uh, form, right?
That's correct.
Because normally, they would say, you gave your name, it's up to us now.
Right, we didn't want to delay the process, so we brought it to you.
All right, let me, let me just say this, if I may, Mayor. I know both of them. Uh, when I was chief, I got more emails from Ms. Audette than I did my boss. Uh, and always, always, uh, hypersensitive on crime. It was all the time, uh, you know, what chief was keeping an eye on, what was going on. And, you know, it's nice, because I could see where the problems were, and, and, and they were there. But I will say this about Mr. Bryant. Uh, he is like a, he's seeking missile on crime and very concerned about community crime, uh, crime and the fear of crime. So, uh, I have a good feeling on anything he does there will be positive for this, this community. I understand about urban blight, how bad areas get. I know Ms. Audette's feelings, and I know Mr. Bryant's feelings, but I have a good feeling about that.
Madam Mayor, I appreciate Commissioner Aragon's comments. However, I believe those are more appropriate. When we finish the batter shell process, we need to complete the hearing procedure of this before we add our personal comments, I believe. Is that correct?
Thank you.
Attorney Rubin?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I think we just need to move on and decide what we're gonna do on this. So...
And I may have a, trying to be, uh, helpful, um...
Attorney Rubin, your comments?
Well, maybe, and trying, maybe, um, how would we maybe, um, move this along? You'll note on the agenda, we have two public hearings. You know, we just did the one on the ordinance summary procedure, and the other one is on the variance request. Uh, we all note for the same property. And, um, the reason why we have two public hearings is because our coach says that, and I consulted, um, Ms. Alvarez, and we agreed that we have to have two separate hearings, um, for, you know, for these processes. That's why it's on the, on the agenda that way. However, the reality is, we know that the evidence basically is gonna be pretty much similar, if not the same, for these two items. So I would think maybe the idea what we could do is, if we've not completed the public hearing on number one, maybe they have a brief public hearing on number two to get that, get that done. But I think you could note, as far as that public hearing is concerned, you can note the test was already provided, uh, from the first public hearing, as also therefore in, uh, um, uh, something you can take into consideration for second public hearing. So maybe the idea would maybe just give all these parties, maybe like a two-minute opportunity to add whatever they want to add that they hadn't had a chance to speak, that might be difference for the variance as opposed to the ordinance summary procedure. Take that into consideration. That, that you can just go to the commission and then deliver it and vote on the tuition.
On the tuition, and we vote on them both separately, correct?
All right, but I did, I, I'm suggesting get the public hearings out of the way first. And I think maybe, I think again, I think the second public hearing could be a lot shorter. I think we've already heard really all the, the relevant testimony. But you give everybody a chance to maybe add whatever they want to for like another two minutes with a testimony that might be, uh, peculiar to the various requests opposed to the alternate summary procedure. That's my idea.
So then we'll just move on to the second public hearing, right? Is that what we do?
If the commission is okay with that, that's my advice.
Okay, so if, if that's the will of the commission, we'll just move on to the second portion of the public hearing, which is the discussion action approval of a variance request for 660 Post Street. Uh, Tracy Alvarez?
And, and again, I don't really, really need to go into the whole procedure or profit. But I think really, we've already gone through all that, the same issues. I think maybe your right to him to speak for two minutes. That's my, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioner's applicant is Sid Bryant, 660 Post. And he's requesting a variance from Municipal Code Section 1515-2B. States both lots to be created, have direct access to paved street with curb and gutter. There is no curb and gutter currently existing along either side of Van Patten or Post Street, within a one block more either way. So we're requesting a variance, so he doesn't have to put curb and gutter right in front of his lot.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. At this time, I will call on the opponent, which is Kim Audette. Um, if you will give a closing statement for at least two minutes and then we'll move on to our proponent.
Two minutes?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, I greatly appreciate, um, City Manager Madrid, um, not getting too terribly involved in this discussion because the lots are owned by, uh, five sis- two sisters named Madrid. Um, let me see. So, uh- The exacerbation of poverty by the drain on services and, um, unequal attention to Sid Bryant's new property is, uh, is inappropriate for the, um, blighted area of West Van Hatten. Um, I already mentioned, uh, the split cannot exist because it creates two illegal lots. The, the utilities in the area are ancient and, uh, have, uh, have, uh, consistently, um, caused danger to the people of the area. And these are a lot of elderly, so this is prejudice against the elderly. Uh, for, for no good reason. I mean, these people are going to have to have oxygen concentrators and extra heat in the winter. There's a strong drain on the utilities already. You have to fix those transformers. Um, adding another transformer demand is not going to help us at all. So you have to look at the whole block, both alleyways. Before you consider, um, giving, uh, Mr. Bryant some, uh, some more utility access. Um, and as I mentioned, adding, uh, more light to the area is not going to help us at all. So we don't need more houses, we've got a 70%-
Thank you, Ms. Aldette. Light. Mr. Bryant? Two minutes closing.
I own this property for a little over three years right now. The one that we're talking about. This is, um, it had two structures on it. Now we'll just have a house and, uh, another house, hopefully. Uh, I, I rent it out through the Pelican Spa. And, uh, people stay there on the weekends primarily and then rent it out other times that it's, um, uh... Whenever it's rented, I pay, uh, uh, city lodging tax on it. Um, and I have, and I, if it were really that blightful in the area, I wouldn't be able to get hotel guests to pay, uh, to pay to stay in. And they all, they all liked it. And I just figured this will clean up, clean it up too. And I'll have, um, and I own another property there. My house is only about three blocks away. And I don't consider any of, uh, of light. And I think we're, the area's changing. It is improving, I think. But I didn't know, I, I thought I was just following a regular procedure. I didn't know, know that this was all involved. But I don't, I think what I'm doing is helping the town, not, um, hurting it.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. At this time, uh, I will go ahead and close the public hearings. Um, Tracy, could I ask you to come back up to the podium, please?
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions, um, regarding the lot size. If I can ask Tracy that are outside of the-
Go ahead, Mary. Question, Luna.
Tracy, uh, what is the required, you said the required lot size is 45 in width? Is there a square footage size? Or is it either or? I don't have those documents in front of me to verify, so I'm-
Give me one moment.
I apologize. And just so y'all know, I feel really safe with you guys in the building right now. Thank you. I don't know why y'all are here, but-
But they look good.
Yeah, y'all look good. We feel important.
So per the municipal code, the lot's, uh, minimum area for an R3 single-family home would be 4,500 square foot with a 45-foot, uh, minimum width. Uh, for a R3-2 family unit, 3,000 square feet. Uh, an R3 multifamily unit, 3,000 square feet. And then, uh, an R3 apartment, 2,000 square feet for the lot size.
So the biggest size has to be 45, and I think it falls like almost 43, correct? Yeah, 42. 42, 9837, yeah.
It also does fit within the standards of the district. If you, uh, the, if you look, uh, at the, I think Mr. Madrid might have a reference to the lots within the area from the county printout radius map.
Yes, I'll pass this up. There are implied lot sizes in the county records. However, you know, I'll pass this around. There are other lots that have been split across those designated. They're not legal description lines. They are references for county records. So, uh, I'll go ahead and pass this around. This shows, the one highlighted, that, oh, we're dealing with now, and shows that many other properties have been split in the same manner.
So a follow-up question. You said R3 and then R3-2, R3, and he's applying for the R, just straight R3? I'm sorry, Tracy.
No, in our, in all of our districts, whether it be R, uh, R1, R2, or R3, um, they're, they're split again into R3 single-family, R3 multifamily, uh, R3, uh, apartment dwellings. And so all of those fall under the R3.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you very much.
Are there, is, are there any other questions? Any other questions? And, uh, Manager Madrid?
Mayor Commissioners, we believe that, uh, this request is in full compliance. We have no reason to recommend against it and, uh, ask clear approval.
Okay, at this time, I will, uh, speak on F1, Public Hearing Discussion Action, the approval of an alternate summary procedure for, um, 660 Post. We have heard, uh, testimony from both our proponents and our opponents and our staff. We have discussed both public hearings. And at this time, I would stand for a motion on F1, Approval of an Alternate Summary Procedure.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Luna approves. Makes a motion to approve.
Commissioner Barco will second that.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of an alternate summary procedure for 660 Post Street, as discussed and noted here today. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Madam Forester?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Barker?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Leonard?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next public hearing is F2, Public Hearing Discussion Action, Approval of a Variance Request for 660 Post Street. Um, we've also heard testimony, uh, from our proponents and our opponents and our staff. And it has been re- recommended for approval. At this time, I will stand for a motion.
Commissioner Forester will make the motion?
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of variance request for 660 Post Street, as noted. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Madam Forester?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Leonard?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Barker?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh-
Madam Mayor, I make, can I make a motion that we amend the agenda and bring the city manager's report up at this time?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner. It doesn't require a motion. You can alter the, the, the sequence at any time.
Okay, at this time, uh, we're just going to move the city manager's report up, uh, right after, um, item F2, after our public hearings, which is right now. Uh, we have some, um, things to do. Excuse me. Uh, thank you. Manager Madrid?
Mayor Commissioners, uh, the reason that we have our law enforcement officials here is because we have an, uh, an officer that recently earned his sergeant stripes. And I'm going to call on Chief to bring up, uh, Officer Martin.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Manager Madrid. Last Thursday, we had, uh, testing for a vacant sergeant's position. Four of our officers applied and all of them did an excellent job. However, based on the point system and Rafael, come up here. Scored the highest on the test. So come over here so I can get this, the coat off your badge on. This is Rafael's brother, Manny Madrid. Obviously, a deputy with the sheriff's office. He pinned in his sergeant's badge.
Give him a little brother poke.
You're a rebel, son.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have anything you'd like to say before you?
Uh, yes, uh, hopefully, I'm, uh, I'm very proud. And very proud of my officers. I have a very good team. I have no doubt that they'll be doing a good job for me. And, uh, I won't let anyone down. It's kind of-
Thank you. Thank you for talking. Thank you all. Thank you for being here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I don't know. I think so.
All right, Manager Madrid?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, for your consideration. We, uh, didn't want to keep them too long. I only have a couple of brief announcements. I know that, uh, Commissioner Aragon is going to talk about the governor's order and some changes there. I will, I'll leave that. Uh, one announcement that I'd like to make is, we are in the process of, uh, negotiating, uh, a rental agreement with the movie company. There's a movie that will be filmed here in town. It will be using our Armory Building and some offices in our civic center. So that may lead to a larger movie later on. Uh, actually, I guess I, I can say the name's Clint Eastwood, it's not a big secret. Uh, that may be coming later. It's a, it's a separate and larger movie that may be coming to the area. So we are working with, uh, with the movie industry in that way. Uh, the other thing is, uh, anybody that go by Ralph Edwards Park noticed a lot of water in the park. That's, uh, because our irrigation system was completed. We have to pressure test it. There was a leak. That's the way it's supposed to work. We're supposed to find them before we activate the system. So that may, uh, delay putting in the sod, uh, past next week into the, in further into the future. We could actually do it in the winter if we needed to. But this is going to cause a, a small delay because we need to mix, uh, the fertilizers and other chemicals that are needed for the sod to take well. But, uh, it's a, it's a minor setback. And in testing, sometimes it doesn't go the way you wanted it to. But it's better to find out now. So I just wanted to let everyone know that if you saw a lot of water at Ralph Edwards Park, that's why. And that's what's going on with the project. Uh, it's, we're still proceeding. Uh, when you see some semi trucks there with sod, you know that we're, we're getting near the end. Um, however, once the, the sod is placed, we still need to keep people off of the sod for a couple of weeks to let it take. But I'll keep everyone informed as we, as we move along. And, uh, I know that, uh, we'll, we'll talk about the restrictions on, uh, gatherings and how that may affect our meetings a little bit later in the agenda. That's my report, Madam.
Thank you, Manager Madrid. Okay, the next item on our agenda this morning is item G, Ordinance Resolution to Zoning. Um, G1, Discussion Action, Resolution Number 182021, Declaration of a New Spaceport Visitor Center. Manager Madrid?
Mayor Commissioners, uh, this is on our agenda. Uh, after discussing that with, uh, Commissioner Barco, it's kind of a regeneration of an idea that has been ongoing, uh, regarding the connection of TRC to the spaceport. I actually had, uh, a conversation last night with, uh, Director of Spaceport America. And that, to, to make sure that we were on the same page. Uh, they support any visitor center. They'd like to have one here. They'd like to have two or three here. They'd like to have one there. They'd like to have one in Las Cruces. They support any center that, uh, can be funded. So their, their support is clear. This is not, uh, uh, a particular, uh, location or design. This is, uh, it, it mentions close to I-25. That's just a natural, uh, spot for, for trying to pull tourists off the interstate. Um, so this doesn't involve any funding. It's a statement by the governing body that we support a visitor center. So with that, if, if there's any other, anyone would like to add anything, um, request any approval of this resolution?
Do I have any questions at this time? Uh, Commissioner Aragon?
Yes, uh, should this go into effect, what happens to the visitor center we have now?
Nothing.
Say, could it be two then?
Yes, it could be, yeah. It, it's not, uh, it, it's only an endorsement of a, a visitor center. It doesn't affect the one that we have. It would be good for us to keep the one in downtown also.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Forester?
Um, yeah, I've always kind of wondered why we didn't have a visitor center closer to I-25 where people are traveling, highly-used, um, freeway. And it'd be nice to have, uh, grab the attention of them. So I think this is a great idea.
Yes, absolutely. I agree with both of them.
Thank you. Um, is, are there any other questions or comments at this time? If not, I will stand for a motion, uh, to approve the resolution, Number 18, Number 182021, Declaration of a New Spaceport Center, Visitor Center. And this is just in support of-
Commissioner Barco will make the motion as noted.
Commissioner Forester, a second.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of Resolution Number 182021, Declaration of a New Spaceport Visitor Center, supporting it. Now, uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Barker?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Madam Forester?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Leonard?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item H, Under Old Business. H1, Discussion Action, Consideration of Amendments to Resolution Number 331920 pertaining to a Back-to-Work Plan for the City of Truth or Consequences. Manager Madrid?
Mayor Commissioners, uh, the governor did issue some new orders to be effective on Friday. And I know that Commissioner Aragon has some discussion on this, so I'll, I'll defer to Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Madrid. Uh, Commissioner Forester and I kind of like overseeing this project. We started several months back. Uh, it's tightening up on the closing times for, uh, food and drink establishments in the Mexico. They have to close at 10 o'clock. Not just the booze, the whole, the whole, uh, facility. Hotels are going, uh, they're being reduced to 60% of the ones that have been certified with the training. 25% for those that are not. And it, it was 75 and, and 50. Quarantining, basically, if you come into our state from a high-risk state, you got to stay, uh, hunkered down for 14 days. And mass gatherings has been a, you know, one of the most confusing things. We're allowed to meet because we're considered an essential operation, essential business or whatever. So that's why Commissions and, uh, Commissioner Luna's met. And people say, "How are they meeting, uh, more than, uh, at that time, five?" Well, that's essential. You got to, you got to have government, that has to continue. But anything else, uh, any, a theater group or whatever, it's changing from, it was loosened up to anything over 10 was a mass gathering. And a mass gathering meant until it's- And a mass gathering meant until this new change, when it was, uh, over 10, 11 or more, indoor or outdoor, cannot happen. Cannot happen unless it's an essential operation. It's going, she's, huh, she's tightened it up because the, uh, what they call, the term is called the public health gating criteria. As the cases rise, the governor's concerns deepen. So she's changed the mass gatherings to five or more. So if you're an indoor meeting with your, uh, your family or a group or the Rotary or the Civic Club and you got five more in the park, you can't do it. It has to be less than five. Uh, so keep that in mind. So with that, uh, personally, I, I'm frozen Rotary and we've been on Zoom for the last six months. I don't think I'm going to see my group until next year. I really don't think, I think it's going to continue. Uh, the vaccine probably won't happen till the summer. Takes three to six months. So, you know, we're going to be, this is a long-term operation. We might be doing this, what we're doing now, for another year. So getting used to it. Mr. Madrid, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, I don't see, uh, any need to amend or modify the resolution at this time. We'll just keep monitoring, going forward.
The only thing I see, uh, area Rotary has something she sent us, uh, about contact tracing and so forth. We don't do that. Uh, I mean, that's, that's Health Department stuff. And there's concerns about, you know, the police not doing certain things. And we've been through that. I don't want to beat a dead horse. Uh, we've done that. Uh, we've talked about that. Uh, the only thing is, uh, we need to wear the masks, wash your hands and keep yourself a distancing. And, uh, as far as who's not enforcing it, bring it to Mr. Madrid. He'll take care of it. And, uh, be safe.
Thank you, Commissioner Aragon. The next item on our.
Before you go off, let me just mention, I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Aragon and correctly pointed out that I think the governor did, uh, issue some new, uh, restrictions yesterday. I don't, I haven't seen the actual order yet from what her, um, uh, restrictions are. Maybe it hasn't been published yet. I don't know. Um, one thing, Commissioner Aragon, I, uh, and I'm not saying you're wrong because I really don't know. But you're understanding that even if we have a mass gathering limited by people, that we, the city should still be allowed to meet in person?
Uh, yes.
Couldn't have the whole thing.
He's asking if we're allowed to meet as, as the governing board.
Yes, because we're essential.
We're essential. What I gathered was, you know, essential, that's why the commission, county commission met. Could have more than that in the audience total. You have a social distancing. If you're an essential business or an essential operation, uh, you can, you can exceed that number, but they still want you to social distance and wear masks.
Now, I have, as far as, I think we have to have a closed meeting and go back to just being on, um, go-to. I don't think we are allowed to have, um, an audience.
An audience. All right.
And I'm, and I'm looking, Mayor Whitehead, and I'm looking at, um, after tomorrow's, uh, um, talk and speech that the governor will give her conference, that, um, she will send more guidelines down because tomorrow she will address everything that will be, will be coming into effect as of Friday. Uh, you know, as everyone is aware of, our numbers are increasing drastically, um, in New Mexico again, as well as here in Sierra County, we keep going up quite a bit. So again, we want to follow the governor's orders. We will be watching for anything that she does send down after tomorrow's conference. And, um, then if, if we need, we can, uh, readdress this ordinance for our next meeting.
It'll be on our agenda anyway.
Yeah. Well, I, I appreciate that. And it may very well be that Commissioner Forrester and Commissioner Aragon, you may be very well right that maybe we are allowed to meet and maybe we're, we'd have to exclude the audience. But I think it's important, we will look at the, at the order and I may do some checking with some, with our other, you know, city attorney, Mr. Appel. Um, he and I had a conversation about this yesterday and he had a different table on the road out to do. So I'll, I'll, I'll be conferring with the city manager about this and certainly way in, way in advance of the next meeting, I will be able to give my recommendations for what we can, what we can do.
And we usually, uh, Manager Madrid and I usually, uh, attend our, uh, a Zoom conference, um, for the mayor's, uh, a mayor's caucus. And they kind of derive about what the governor has put down and what she is talking about. So we kind of get it with both, with the mayors and with the, with the permission, uh, I mean, the governor's.
And when you meet with the mayors, would you clarify that on if we are marked deemed essential and still can meet?
Yes, and we will do that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And we'll probably have four more help orders before our next.
Absolutely. We sure will.
Correct. Yes. Okay. Thank you all. Our next item on our agenda this morning is item I-1, under new business, discussion, uh, presentation, electrical utility revenues. Commissioner Aragon and George DeGehdi. Thank you for being here and thank you for your patience.
Mayor, Mayor, um, this presentation that Mr. DeGehdi is going to give us is, uh, we've given it several times. We gave it to the city manager. We gave it to several people from the, uh, Sierra County and TRC Chamber of Commerce. And, you know, it was definitely a wake-up call regarding issues that have happened in the past. During my campaign, I, uh, kept hearing, I, I call it the one and a half million dollar dilemma, where we, you know, we were, there was a lot of concern about us taking a million and a half dollars out of the enterprise, the electrical enterprise fund and having it transitioned to help the city operate. And I do know in at least three or four cities where I've been chief, out of the seven, this has happened. It's happened, it's the, any city that's bought electricity wholesale and solid retail, they borrowed or took from there to run the rest of the city. It depends on what city, how much they use. We were using about a million and a half. And I know it's going down. Mr. Madrid's doing a fine job on that. But the thing is, what I wanted, and I, I asked George, who's a master at this math stuff and so forth, I said, we need to find out what the options are. If we, if we don't want to keep taking this money, what, what, what can we do to not take the money? And you're going to be surprised on what we should do if we really wanted to do it. And I'm not sure, I'm sure most people would say this can't happen. But he's going to present very clear, reasonable options on what we can do in lieu of doing this. So George, it's all yours.
Okay. Um, can everybody hear me? Or check, let me ask off here. Let me do this. Um, again, this has been an issue for a number of years, ever since I've been in town. And, uh, there have been critics who have constantly saying, this is an enterprise fund. You cannot take money from an enterprise fund to run the city. However, there's never been a, at least in public, a detailed analysis of the situation and what this actually means and what the options are. Um, so as I was, uh, coaching, uh, Commissioner Aragon during his, um, uh, campaign, you know, this is one of the things we talked about. And, uh, later I came back in, consolidated all of our discussions, did some additional research, and, and I put this together. Um, so we're taking a million and a half to supplement the city's, uh, general fund in order to pay our bills every year. Um, I might add that, you know, even though when you look at the budget, there are some large numbers in there. Um, if you take the utilities out as they are self-sufficient and they pay, they, they pay their own bills, and then you take out the money that comes in via grants and loans for large product, projects, you're left with a, um, about $6 million, uh, which it takes to operate the city and, uh, and maintain all of the functions essential for the city's operation. So a one and a half billion dollars, it's about 25% of our city's actual budget. Okay? Now, if we were going to cut a million and a half out of the budget, what would that do? Well, uh, when you count, uh, unemployment, uh, uh, health benefits, uh, social security and salaries and everything, uh, and one employee costs the city approximately $50,000 a year. So the, everybody says, well, reduce personnel to save money. Okay? Well, we have to cut 30 employees of the city staff. Well, we only have 110 employees, so 30 out of that, that's 27% of our employees. But it's even worse than that because we have approximately 35 of those employees that work for and are paid for via the, uh, utility departments. So actually, you're talking about taking 30 out of 75 employees. You know, okay, who's going to do the work? Uh, we, I, I hear a lot of times that departments say they're short-staffed. They need help. They have difficulty getting things done. You know, you're going to knock another 30 employees out? I don't think that's a tenable solution. A million and a half dollars, that's 100% of the, uh, the amount of money that the city goes in to support the police department. It's three times the park and recreation budget and it's seven and a half times the library budget. Okay? Now, you can go in and cut costs, but if you're going to cut a million and a half out of the budget, you're going to seriously impact the city's ability to conduct its business. Okay? So what are our revenue sources? We have property tax. We have GRT and there are a host of other, um, smaller, uh, revenue sources that we can count on annually. Let's look at property tax first of all. And this is the residential. This is the reg, residential right here. When you look at your property tax bill, this, uh, these are the mill levies for each of these components of that, of that bill. And when you look at that for the municipal levy is 1.442, which is less than 6% of the total property tax bill. Right? If people complain about high property taxes, you can see where they should be addressing their, their concerns. It's not because the city is taking an inordinate amount out of that property tax. In fact, when you look at the property tax, this is for 2018, TRC has an assessed property value, taxable property value of about $101 million. Uh, and here's a residential and non-residential breakout. But we, in 2018, we collected 170,000 from property tax. That's all. Elephant Butte, I say their mill levy is 4.225, approximately three times what we, we charge. They have 60% of the assessed property value that we have, but they collect 50% more in property tax than we do. Okay? And, uh, their figures are there for the county. And you look all the way over there for Williamsburg, the, uh, mill levy for Williamsburg is higher than what the mill levy is for TRC. And Williamsburg does not have nearly the, uh, responsibility for providing services that the city does. So what would we have to do if we wanted to make up that million and a half from property tax? Um, and I have all of these numbers on my calculations on a separate spreadsheet if anybody wants to look at them later on. We'd have to add 14.208 to the mill levy to generate another million and a half dollars given our, um, assessed property values. So that takes our, uh, county tax bill from 22.962 all the way up to 35.728, or a 56% tax per, say, increase in the property tax bills. Okay? Um, about the same if you're looking at commercial properties. So what does that mean? And I, I took the, uh, values for our house here. A $160,000 house assessed at $130,000. Now pays $863 a year. Under that new, uh, you know, uh, new levy, that bill would go up to $1,346 a year. It's a $500 increase. Uh, now, for some of us, you know, yeah, that would, you know, it, it'll, it will say ouch, but many of us can afford it. But there is always concern about those people at the lower end of the, uh, the income scale who have trouble paying their bills anyway. So, you know, making this entire deficit up by property tax alone, it, it would be a hard pill to swallow. Or we can increase the, uh, taxable property. Okay? So 170,000 is about one ninth of a million and a half. So we'd have to increase the taxable value by a factor of nine. So we'd have to add a billion dollars in assessed taxable value, uh, to the, uh, property in the city. Or basically add nine comparable structures for every building that exists in the city. And that's not going to happen either. How about GRT? Well, we collect about $3 million from GRT based upon taxable sales of about $150 million. So to generate another million and a half, we'd need to add $75 million to taxable sales. That's a tough, that's tough to do. Uh, and we'd need a lot more businesses and a lot more activity to do that. It would be nice, you know, if all of a sudden we, we would, uh, increase the, uh, the tourist flow through the town by 50% or more. And we would generate more revenue. But that's again, something that's not likely to happen, uh, very quickly. I think it's something we should strive for in the long run. But, you know, uh, that, that's certainly not a, a, a very, uh, realistic thing to, uh, hope for. Uh, we could also add 1% to the sales tax, which will make the city tax rate 2.685%, uh, giving us a total, say, a GRT rate of 9.5, which puts us over the state mandated limit. So increasing the rate is, is not an option either. So can we do something else? Well, how, since we're taking the money from the electric department anyway, what if instead of just transferring money over, we establish, uh, an electric tax or surcharge or franchise tax or something like that? We sell 40 million kilowatt hours, uh, every year to non-municipal users. If you figure out how much a million and a half is, you know, uh, when you break it down per kilowatt hour, that's 3.75 cents per kilowatt hour that is sold. All right? Or for every one cent of tax per kilowatt hour, we would add $400,000 to our, our revenue. Okay? Now, say, oh no, you know, now we're going to charge more for electric, you know, right? I can see the panic right there. But no tax rate is really needed. Since the money comes from the electric department, why don't we just re-designate how the money is collected? Currently, we have an electrical surcharge, the electric cost adjustment, which is at 4.12 cents per kilowatt hours. If we subtract out the, uh, the electric tax, that 3.75 cents, that leaves us a, a much smaller, uh, electric cost adjustment of .37 cents per kilowatt hours. And there is no net change to the, to the, uh, electric bill. Everybody's bill, it would come back, there'd be an extra line on the bill, on the bill showing that this much money goes to the cost adjustment and this much goes to the, the, uh, the tax, but the, the sum total will be the same. Or perhaps we can do a combination. As I said, our, our property tax is, is very low. Now, I'm going to hit. Now, I'm going to hit on that a little bit later. If we increase our property tax, this would be by a factor of three, okay, it takes us up to four point three two six mils. That would generate an additional three hundred and forty thousand dollars every year. Okay? And this puts us right on par with what Elephant Butte charges for their property tax. And you look at it, you know, Elephant Butte doesn't have a library, they don't maintain a big recreational complex like we have down at our Miho Park, they don't have the roads to maintain that we do. TRC has a lot more responsibility toward the people in the county as a whole than any of the other municipalities. And there's no reason, you know, that we shouldn't have a tax rate which is comparable to other communities that don't do as much for the county as TRC does. So if we generate another three hundred and forty thousand off the property tax, this reduces the amount we need from the electric fund to one million one hundred and sixty thousand, and thus the electric tax comes to two point nine cents per kilowatt-hour. And that then bumps up the electric surcharge to one point two two cents per kilowatt-hour. The electric bills still stay the same. And I know every time you talk about increasing a tax or a cost or something, you know, people say, what about, you know, the poor old woman sitting there in her trailer on a fixed income, you know, and she's accounting and making every penny count? Let me tell you what that'll mean. We were looking at purchasing a mobile home up on Silver at one time. It was a very nice, well-kept mobile home, it had a permanent shade structure built over it, and it was on a double lot. The total property tax bill for that property was fifty-eight dollars. That's, so the city's portion of that fifty-eight dollars was about three dollars. So if we triple our tax bill, they're still paying less than ten dollars a year on those properties. And again, many of our seniors live in public housing, where property tax is not an issue. Many of them live in mobile homes on rented spots, you know. Yeah, there may be a few people that are, you know, affected, but again, we have administrative ways to help those with lower income. And if this hits them hard, we can give them breaks with utility, we can do all kinds of stuff. But I believe we do need to increase our property taxes as part of this solution. Why? Well, I went and I went to the Department of Taxation and Revenue and looked at the tax certificates for the other counties in this area. Here you see the mill levies for all the other, for many of these other municipalities. The closest one to us is Silver City at three point six, which is more than double what we collect. Silver City collects a lot of property tax revenue from the copper mine down there, so they don't have to have a very high mill levy. But still, you know, and then the same thing with their county, that's why their totals are so low. But all of the other towns, look, even Bayard, four point three six seven, you know, anybody been to Bayard, you know, it's not that much of a town, it's smaller, much smaller than TRC. Dimming, five point two four two, Hatch, five point four five, Las Cruces, ooh. We are way low when it comes to our property tax mill levy. And why should we be concerned? Well, remember, we talked about the utilities. When we reply for USDA loans, they look at our utility rates, and if our utility rates are not up to par, we will either not get the loans, or we will pay a higher percentage in loans and less in grants. And when we look at other sources of funding, and they look at our tax structure, and they see our property tax rate being this low, they're going to feel the same way. TRC is not doing its part to pay their own bills, why should we give them this money to help? All right? I know, as I said, it's a hard pill to swallow. And going with a straight electric tax, it would be painless. Nobody would be affected, no money coming out of their pocketbooks. But I believe, and I've spoken to the commission in the past on this, that I believe we do need to bring our property tax up. And this just goes to show how far behind we are on other communities. If we want to build a community and to improve on it, this is definitely an option that needs to be considered. So have we solved the problem? Well, I mean, that's up to you. I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Aragon.
Yes, thank you, George. This is just a wake-up call. I mean, we, as commissioners, we have to keep this in mind, you know, just like the water and the sewage infrastructures, Madrid's working on that, getting us out of that black hole, whatever we've been in for many years. Pay now, or you pay later. And that's what's happened. So when this comes up, be thinking about it. Of course, we're not advocating increasing anything, but we just need to think about this, because we can't continue this matter. So when it comes up, we're enlightened, and that's why I asked Mr. Cusack to do what he did. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Do I have any further questions?
Madam Mary, I do have a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation. The city of TRC is a utility company who runs a municipality. It has always been known that. When I said as a city commissioner before, and my father before that, we are just a utility company. I mean, think about the monopoly board, and how crucial those utility squares are on the monopoly board. That is crucial to our infrastructure. I think if we're going to raise, anytime we raise our utility rates, or we talk about raising taxes, we have to sell that to the public. We have to let the public know what they're going to be getting for their added dollars, especially in twenty-twenty, dollars are so scarce and so hard to work for these days. And so I think it's going to be scary to the public who's listening or, you know, hearing this presentation, but we are under taxed on our property rates. I think, you know, that, you drive through Dimming, drive through Lardsburg, think about Socorro, think, you want to talk about some Blythe, there's some Blythe there. I think we have room to increase those property taxes, but we need to let the public know what we're going to do with that added money. Otherwise, there should not be a single problem or concern with rating the utility enterprise fund when we need to, because that is where our money comes from. And if you don't understand that, then you need to understand governmental math, you need to look at the books, you need to understand where our revenue comes from, you need to go back to square one. So I would like to ask Attorney Rubin to examine what level the commission can authorize for mills without going to a public vote, and report back to us at our next meeting, so we can start that conversation. And I think these are going to be healthy conversations that may need to be taken place in a workshop setting and not in our meeting, because it is going to be some heavy-hitting conversations and some mathematical breakdowns, so we can get the money we need and not gravely or negatively impact our residents. But we need to be ready to tell, and, you know, every time the school board goes out for those mill requests, they come up with a list of things they want to do with that money. I think we need to be prepared, even if we don't go to a vote on it, we need to tell them, we're going to make improvements here, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, so they know. And then we have to be responsible and follow through on that list. We can't just pie in the sky, make promises, and never follow through on them. So my request to Attorney Rubin is to find out what level we can go up to, and then the manager and staff will come back with some projections on that at our next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Luna. I also feel that anytime we talk about increasing any money, whether it be utilities, property taxes, or anything that we increase, we should always come before a public meeting and get the public involved, and so that everyone is aware of what we're doing. And I like the idea where Commissioner Luna stated that we should list out what we're going to improve with this money increase. And we need to look at a plan. I've always thought about five-year plans, ten-year plans. I mean, I've sat up here for a while, and I always suggest, we need, you know, we can't come up with money today and have something built tomorrow. We need to have a plan as where we're going to go, how we're going to get the money. First, we need to decide what we need, be it infrastructure, be it machinery, be it whatever. Then we have to plan on how we're going to get the money, and how we're going to pay for it, whether it be a five-year plan or a ten-year plan. You know, it's just something that we can't just come to the commission with or the public and say, we need this now. I do know that there are emergencies, and so we have to be prepared for those emergencies. We do live in a community where, we are a senior community, and we do live on fixed incomes, so we have to look out for that. I do know that at one time, when I was with the county, there's a lot of delinquency in property taxes. So again, if you increase property taxes, are you going to have more delinquency and running people out of their homes? You know, so we tend to have to view this in all aspects of how we're going to be, and get the public involved, bring the public together, and get them involved, and decide where we're going to go with this. And that's all I have to say.
Are there any other questions?
I'll kind of just piggyback off that, too. I mean, you hear all the time, people want our infrastructure fixed, but the fact is, we need money to do things like that. And so George Best was a great presentation, and I hope that we can look more into it and see how it's feasible for our county and our city, and our people who live here. And like you said, when you hit people with raising anything, I mean, lots of people move here because they check out our property taxes, and they say, wow, those are very low, so we're going to move there. So we've got to be really careful on how we raise stuff like that.
Thank you.
I might add that when we lived in St. Louis, we had a house almost identical to what we have now, and the property tax over there was over two thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
And you go across the river into Illinois, and it was three thousand thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
So again, you're right, they are real low here. But again, as I pointed out, the city portion of that is very small.
Right. And that is something that we've always talked about, that we were very small. And so we really need to look at how much we want to increase it, what is it going to do to our tax base, what is it going to do to our community, and can we get there from here? Do we have to go to a vote, or can we just increase it? And I've thought about this for a very long time, even when I, again, back when I was with the county, this same question came up. And so again, we just need to take our first steps and find out what we can do, is there a combination we can do? You know, I mean, you came up and had some great ideas and some great presentations there, so thank you for that. And this won't die, this will continue to be looked at, and again, like Commissioner Luna has instructed Attorney Rubin and Manager Madrid to come back with some ideas at our next meeting. And hopefully, after the first of the year, we can put together something and keep moving on this.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda this morning is item I two, discussion action, approved waiver request and zoning statement as required by the state for the Truth or Consequences Brewing Company, city manager.
I'll go ahead and call on Tracy to present that item. Tracy?
Mayor, commissioners, back in February ninth, twenty sixteen, the city commission approved the liquor license and a waiver request for the TRC brewery. At this time, the TRC brewing company is adding a new state license to their existing small brewery license. This will allow them to sell their beer to restaurants and grocers. And similar to their previous license, there is a required waiver request that is being submitted, and the waiver request is because he is within three hundred foot distance of a church. I do believe Mr. Masterson may be on GoTo, thank you. And Stanford, any questions? All required documents and fees have been paid, so at this time, we're requesting approval of the waiver.
Thank you. At this time, John, do you have any questions or comments that you would like to make? I understand that you're on GoTo meeting.
Yes, I'm here, and I think I provided all the info in the documents I've submitted. Anytime there's a change to a liquor license, the state of Mexico requires basically the entire packet to be re-submitted, and so that's the reason for this request for the waiver of the three hundred foot distance, because we are two hundred and thirty feet away from the church.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
At this time, do we have any questions from the commission?
Madam Mary, I have a question. Are we required to contact the Methodist Church? Have we, and do we have any representatives here?
So the applicant, Mr. Masterson, they're required to send out the notifications, and then they submit to the city clerk's office, so I'll refer to Clerk Torres for her report.
Thank you. Yes, they did send letters to everybody within the three hundred foot area, in matters including the church. We received three letters in favor of the wholesale license and the labor. And we don't have anybody, I don't believe, in the having that. Is there further?
Let me go further with that. I like the question. Ordinarily, I probably would have been recommending we have a national public hearing or something like this, but in this case, I don't think you need to do that, because we already had approved the waiver back in twenty sixteen. All we're doing is basically kind of just expanding the scope of it at this point. But nevertheless, I am pleased to see that Nozah, and even all the people, all the entities that are within three hundred feet of the business, and as pointed out, we've had three entities say in favor. I know we opposed it as far as we know. Maybe just to complete the record, I really was with as far as the crowd, but if you might want, just maybe if anybody thinks we were opposing this, and that would have been, you know, should have missed, so there is no opposition.
Thank you, Attorney Rubin. Commissioner Horst.
So my question is, we're really not, and like you said, they're not doing anything different at their current establishment, they are just going to now be selling to restaurants and grocery stores. So it shouldn't affect anybody that's close to them anyway?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct. Thank you, John.
And if I may, too, included with your packet is a zoning statement. And that is also part of what he's required to submit, and so we are asking also for approval of that zoning statement, so I can side on about that.
Thank you. Madam Mary, I make a motion we approve the request for TRC brewery.
Mr. Barker will second that.
I have a motion in a second to approve the waiver request and zoning statement as required by the state for the Truth or Consequences Brewing Company, as noted by Tracy Alvarez. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please hold on?
Honorable Francis Leonard?
Hi.
Honorable Rambel Aragon?
Hi.
Honorable Paul Barker?
Hi.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Hi. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item I three, discussion action, award airport RFP to construct electrical vault and install regulatory in order to update and improve electrical services for all runway and other lighting at the municipal airport. Tracy Alvarez.
Mayor, Manager, Judge, commissioners, if I may, I'd like to call up Tim with Armstrong Consultants, he is our airport engineer, and I'd like him to present this item.
Thank you. Welcome, Tim.
And I'm sorry, I didn't repeat his last name, because he can pronounce it better than me.
We don't want to butcher it, right?
Mayor, commissioners, city managers, I'm Tim Armstrong with Armstrong Consultants. Anyway, this project's been about a year coming. We, I'll just give you a little background. We, I'll just give you a little background on it. This was bid, and it's basically to move your regulators in one of your old F S S buildings that's at the airport. I know in the past, you were talking about doing something with it, you know, turn it into a museum, but it has all your electrical feet coming out of it, comes into your main power comes in there and then goes into the regulator and goes out. It's really not an ideal place to have an electrical bolt in an old building. So what we did is we designed a little 12-by-12 C M U building adjacent, kind of in the same area, out of the way. There's a couple of things that we had to stay away from. You have an A W O S, which is a weather service instrument in that area, so we had to stay away from that. You have a beacon there. So we designed the building, and we did that building last August for this, to, it was actually supposed to be a 19 FAA project. Well, the FAA was waiting for environmental clearance from SHIPPO at that time. They hadn't gotten concurrence by SHIPPO. We bid the bill, we bid out the contractor, bid out the contract, and we had two bidders. One out of Los Angeles, one out of Albuquerque, two electrical contractors that were licensed to do that type of work. At that time, we couldn't, the FAA would not provide the funds at that time since they were waiting on concurrence from SHIPPO. They finally got that concurrence from SHIPPO, and SHIPPO wanted some extra work done, which they contacted us, we got environmental firm to do that work that SHIPPO required. And so we got that all completed. Hence, this year, we still had the bid, I had been in contact with a contractor that was a low bidder at the time, and they were willing to hold their prices for a year. So at this time, we got federal money, and waiting a year actually was better for y'all because this year, in 2020, the feds decided to fund all their projects at 100%.
Oh, that sounds great.
Yeah. Usually, your funding is 90%, and we go after 90% FAA, 5% usually M N V O P Aviation Department, and 5% Match on your own. But this year, with the COVID and all that, they had new funding, and so you're being funded at 100%.
Awesome.
And so, which takes care of the contractors' bid, art, engineering, and construction admin services, and that extra, I think it was about $8,000 in environmental that we had to do. So it's about $214,000, fully 100% funded by the FAA this year. You already have that grant in hand, the money's in your checkbook, and all that you need to do with this is basically do a notice of, not notice of receipt, notice of award, I'm sorry, notice of award, and then I can get the contractor started on their agreement with you all and get the package going.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Are there any questions at this time from the commission? If not, I will stand for a motion to approve the award of Airport RFP.
Commissioner Aragon, motion.
Commissioner Forster, second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the award Airport RFP to construct electric bolt and install regulatory in order to update and improve electric services for all runway and other lighting at the Municipal Airport. Do I have any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Paul Buckler.
Aye.
Honorable Nana Forster.
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Ramon Aragon.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, please.
The next item on our agenda is Item I-4, Discussion/Action: Consider Appointment of Linda Di Marina to the Lodger's Tax Borad advisory board, City Manager.
Mayor, Commissioners, the application and assertion of conflict of interest have all been completed. This comes with the recommendation of the Lodger's Tax Board. There's no reason to not agree with that recommendation.
Are there any questions from the commission?
I have a question. How will this impact Main Street's ward of receiving lodger's tax? Mr. Di Marina will just have to abstain?
In cases where she personally may have a conflict, she should abstain. As part of an organization, it's going to depend on the exact situation. But she has agreed, and I think she's on here now, that there will be times where she may have to abstain, just like any other member.
Right, perfect. I have no further questions. Thank you.
At this time, if there are no other questions, I will stand for a motion for the approval to consider the appointment of Linda Di Marina to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board.
Commissioner Forster will make the motion.
No, Commissioner Aragon, second.
I have a motion in a second for the consideration of the appointment of Linda Di Marina to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Paul Buckler.
Aye.
Honorable Nana Forster.
Aye.
Honorable Francis Leonard.
Aye.
Honorable Ramon Aragon.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is Item I-5, Discussion/Action: Consider Appointment of Steve Zeski to the Planning and Zoning Commission, City Manager.
Mayor, Commissioners, this also comes with the recommendation of planning the zoning commission. They did hold fairly extensive interviews, and this is their recommendation. Mr. Zeski has met the qualifications for application and conflict of interest, and there's no reason not to concur with the recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have any questions from the commission, Commissioner Aragon?
Yes, Mr. Forster, what's the status of the makeup now, being, is it still short on, I guess, or what?
Currently, right now, we have three members, and then Mr. Zeski, if he is appointed, that will be our fourth member. And we are continuing to advertise for all the vacancies on all of our boards.
How many, if he's selected, how many of you have left then?
We'll have one vacancy.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a question. How does that work? Do you live here full-time now, or will we have an issue when you go back home? I'm not sure.
I'm also living here full-time. I might go home for a couple of months in the summer. I gotta be much quicker.
Commissioner Buckle, we can't ask questions of them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion we approve the appointment of Stephen Zeski to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Commissioner Buckle, a second.
I have a motion in a second for the consideration of the appointment as recommended to Steve Zeski to the Planning and Zoning Commission Board. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Ramon Aragon.
Aye.
Honorable Nana Forster.
Aye.
Honorable Francis Leonard.
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Paul Buckler.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item I-6, Discussion/Action: The selection of a mayor pro temp, City Manager Madrid.
Mayor, I'm going to refer this item right back to the governing body. I'd like to make the nomination of Commissioner Forster.
And I second that motion.
Right, I missed it.
Nomination of Commissioner Forster.
Okay.
And I second that motion. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none. At this time, I have a nomination and a motion in a second that we appoint Commissioner Forster as the mayor pro temp. Are there any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Paul Buckler.
Aye.
Honorable Ramon Aragon.
Aye.
Honorable Nana Forster.
Do I vote? Aye.
Honorable Francis Leonard.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, do I vote?
We're getting votes. It would only have been weird if you'd have said no.
All right. The next item on our agenda is Item I-7, New Business Discussion/Action Approval to Hold One Meeting in the Month of November, on November 18th, and One Meeting in December, on December 16th, in lieu of the regular scheduled meetings for November and December 2020. Manager Madrid.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is something that is done traditionally because the second meeting can fall at or near the Thanksgiving or Christmas holiday. The city is capable of consolidating all the agenda items into one meeting, and we also have the ability to call special meetings whenever we need to. So there would be no break in services or approval of any critical item. So that's why this is before you, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission?
Just kind of a comment on still what we find out on the governor's orders, if that will even still be possible to even have one, but I think one, approving one is a good idea.
Well, you'll still be able to have a meeting, we just don't know if it'll be virtual.
Right, right, okay. True.
Okay, at this time, I will stand for a motion to approve holding of one meeting in November, on November 18th, and one meeting in December, which will be on December 16th, in lieu of our regularly scheduled meetings in November and December.
Commissioner Luna, so moves.
Commissioner Buckle, a second.
I have a motion in a second to approve those two dates as noted. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Paul Buckler.
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Francis Leonard.
Aye.
Honorable Ramon Aragon.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda are reports. Of course, City Manager already gave his report. Is there anything else you need to add or say?
No, Mayor. I think we're okay.
Thank you. The next one is City Attorney, Attorney Rubin. Do you want to report it this time?
Not today, thank you.
Thank you. And let's go down to the City Commission. Commissioner Forster, do you have reported this time?
Um, no. Oh, thank you for that. No, thank you for the nomination. I appreciate it. Francis, it was great working with you on your first meeting. You are awesome and a book full of knowledge, so I look forward to the rest of your time with us.
Thank you. Commissioner Buckler.
I want to congratulate Francis as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not me, Commissioner.
Congratulations, Nana.
This Paul forgot. Congratulations, Nana.
Thank you.
I know you'll do great. It was a joy, the first meeting. Wow. I had a healthy meeting with the manager yesterday to kind of go over some things, ask him where he was at with some things, and I'll present those in our November meeting. To the concern about the governor's health order, as a county commissioner, and I realize there are different governmental entities, but all governmental entities should fall with under that public health order as the necessity for government business to continue, and that is the way the Association of Townies has instructed all counties to be able to continue business, that the commissioners or manager and the necessary staff could be there, but otherwise, the general public would just have to attend virtually. So I think that, I don't see why there would be any difference, but I know we will have several more public health orders, especially with election coming and going between now and our next meeting. Thank you, and I look forward to the journey. Commissioner Aragon.
Yes, congratulations on April 10, Forster.
Thank you.
And glad to see that happen. As far as Commissioner Luna, I mean, this is why you're sitting there. The heat-seeking missile is taking effect here as far as getting things done, and that's why I've always admired her. The traction we just got on this enterprise, though, was amazing. I mean, it was a wake-up call, and you push it ahead, and I think it's a really grand idea. That's all I have.
Thank you. And my report is, again, we do have to follow the health order of our governor. Remember, masks are required. We do realize that we are voting at this time. Early voting is taking place at the county offices. There are signs, they are practicing safe practices where you should be wearing your mask when you go into early vote, you should be washing your hands properly, and six feet apart, remember that. Remember, the lives we save may be our own or our family members. Remember, I know that a lot of people do not like to wear the mask, and especially all day when you have to wear the mask at work all day, so please, please be respectful. You know, it is a requirement. We ask that you wear your masks, but please respect other people. If they don't want to wear it, well, you know, that's it, but they should. Also, one other thing I would like to mention, I know that I've received several calls about our downtown trick-or-treat. Again, Halloween falls on Saturday, October 31st. I do want to let everyone know that we are the city Main Street. We are diligently working on getting something out. We will make sure that all our little goblins in the city of T R C, Sierra County, are taken care of and will get a bag of candy. That will be forthcoming probably at our next meeting, that I will let, we will have information as to what we're doing. But not only is Main Street, but we as the city are working on putting something together for our kids. We do encourage no door-to-door trick-or-treating. Again, you know, there may be a lot of lights out this year. It will not be the same as it has been in the past. You know, we usually get downtown and have a best of time, but we do have to stay safe, not only as adults keeping us safe, but also keeping our little ones safe. All right? So I will let you all know when we have final thoughts and plans of what will be happening on trick-or-treat, but kiddos, you will get your candy. And that's all I have to say. And at this time, the next item on our agenda is a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Forster makes the motion.
We all motion to adjourn. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, sign. Motion carries. Thank you.